Good luck, buddy.
Really?
Okay, we're ready, Joe.
Okay, good evening, everyone. What we'd like to do is we'd like all the applicants to put their system on mute until they hear us calling their particular application forward. Members of the board are free to go in and out on mute as they want. I want to emphasize that if members of the board have questions about anything that's going on, or they want to ask applicants questions, do not hesitate. I cannot see more than four people at a time on my camera. So speak up, ask the question, but identify who you are. And when we do any voting, we'll be going through everybody asking for votes. So we're going to call the meeting open, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes that were conducted on June the 22nd.
Second.
Moved by Ann and seconded by Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Fred Gilbert, aye.
Aye.
And I. I think that's unanimous, Lisa.
Got it.
Minutes are approved as written. The next item on the agenda is an application by Andrew Day for a Taff Road Solar Company. It's scheduled for a public hearing on the site plan for a solar array at 9966 Taff Road, East Syracuse. And this is identified as tax map number 34-1-20.1. This is a public hearing for site plan only. It had already been approved for zoning change by the town board.
Joe, this is Fred Gilbert. Jamie's memo said that we should determine seeker before the public hearing. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
And the first thing I want to ask is, Lisa, did we send out proper notice of publication?
Yes.
Okay, then I would entertain, well, let's move right into seeker. Jamie, did you want to ask the questions to the board? And board members, feel free to speak out if you feel strongly regarding any of these issues.
Joe, may I just ask a question real quick? This is Drazen Gassik from Abella Associates. I believe seeker was already completed, but a town board. The town board is the lead agency for this project.
Jamie, did this town board do seeker for his site plan?
No, they must have done it for the special permit. For the special permit as lead agency.
Yeah, the town board is the seeker lead agency for this project, from my understanding.
That makes sense. I didn't, I did not get their finding, but I'll try to, I'll try to find that. Allison, I wonder, can Allison hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm just helping an applicant get into the meeting, and then I'll look into that.
Okay. So why don't we?
Jamie, you're on mute.
Why don't we proceed? And we can do the, we can proceed with the public hearing. It's, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we're going to do that, I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the public, what is it called? Public meeting?
The notice of publication?
Thank you.
Okay. We have a second for waiver or the reading of the notice of publication.
Fred Gilbert, seconded.
Fred Gilbert, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Richard moves, so open the public hearing.
Michael Roy, seconded.
Michael Roy, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is hereby open for any public input on this application for a solar array at 6966 Taff Road. Lisa, the question is to you. Did we receive any correspondence relative to this application?
I was just going to answer that before you asked. I have not received any, anything from the public regarding this application.
Okay. I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anybody here who wants to speak relative to this application?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
Motion by Richard to close.
Fred Gilbert, seconded.
Fred Gilbert, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess what I'd like to do is, Allison, just to check the town board meeting minutes with respect to...
So I have the Taff Solar right here filed in front of me, and I do have Part II EAF that was signed by the town supervisor. I was trying to say that earlier, and it kicked me off. Sorry, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, and it's a negative seeker declaration, I presume?
Uh, yeah.
I would entertain a motion relative to this application for site plan approval.
Can I, can I jump in for a second, Joe?
Richard, you can indeed.
There was a plan that was dropped off on Friday. It doesn't have major changes, but I would prefer that we keep the public hearing open for another meeting because the public has not had access to this document. And Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, if they have had access, it's only been for one business day at the most. Is that...
I believe, I'm trying to think when I got it. Let's see. It's been on the website since the ninth. So one, yeah, about three days, four days.
What day, what's today, 13th, 12th?
Yeah.
11th, 10th? So it was Thursday that you got this?
Correct.
I know, that's, that's just my thought on it.
The publication was, was done. Sometimes there's last minute changes, and the opportunity to, to appear at the meeting has occurred. That would be my, my input on that, whether, and I know Doug, you looked at it. What, what were the changes?
Yeah, I did talk to the applicant on Friday, and they indicated that the change was a minor change for location of an additional inverter pad. So, you know, I didn't see it as, because my concern was similar to Rich's, but I didn't see it as a major impact to the site plan, and it definitely did not impact the stormwater pollution plan.
I, Doug, I don't disagree at all. It, they were minor changes. My concern is that we're setting a precedent that we will take in modified plans hours or days before a planning board meeting and a public hearing. And I would prefer not to go down that road. This was minor changes. The next plan may be major changes.
Richard, is that a motion that we suspend the public hearing?
I would like to keep it open until the next meeting so that the public has time to actually see this plan. As Doug said, and I agree 100% with him, they are very minor changes that shouldn't affect it, but I don't want to set a precedent that we're taking plans in on a Thursday or Friday before a Monday meeting, and then approving the new plans for site plan. This was done years ago on the, on the planning board. I don't think it's a good practice, but I'm just one vote, and that's just my thought.
I'll second it.
Was that you, Ann?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Richard and seconded by Ann to keep the public hearing open, which would mean that we would have to delay until the next hearing any resolution of this matter. All in favor of a delay of the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. So, Joe, sorry, this is, this is Drazen. Just real quick, I just want to make sure that the public hearing was still open. I thought there was a vote already to close the public hearing, and now we're extending it, or...
We're extending the public hearing.
Did we not have a vote already to just close the public hearing?
As a matter of fact, you're right. I was the one that made that motion, and I shouldn't have.
See, Richard, are you modifying your motion to reopen the hearing?
Yes.
With the same terms and conditions?
Yes.
Andy, you still want to second that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I, I apologize to the board. I got ahead of myself.
It's all right, Richard. You felt strongly about something. All right, then the public hearing is hereby continued until our next meeting. And at that time, we'll address the public hearing issue and, and the applicant's request. The next item on the agenda is an application by Everland Holding. This is regarding property located at 8490 Salt Springs Road in Manlius. This is a scheduled public hearing on a two-lot subdivision, tax map number 101-11.1. Madam Secretary, did we publish notification on the hearing?
Yes, we did.
This is Fred Gilbert. I would move that we waive the reading of the publication of the hearing.
Motion made. Second, Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Reading of the notification, publication notification is waived. We should move on to seeker. Jamie, would you like to lead us through?
I'll have to pull up the, the part two. I don't have that in front of me. Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. We're going to start with the following. And again, this is a two-lot subdivision that seems to be, appears to be in accordance with our zoning. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No.
Will the, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera?
No.
Proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problem?
No.
No.
Proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Therefore, there will, would be a finding of no significant environmental impacts and a negative seeker declaration.
I'll make that motion.
So Ann's making the motion for a negative declaration?
Seconded.
Was that seconded by Rich?
I did. If somebody else did, they could, they could, it's fine if somebody else did.
I only heard you, Rich.
I did, I did.
Motion made and seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I, I had one question on this before we go forward. The county planning agency is telling us that there should have been a mandatory agricultural data statement provided to us regarding this. And my question, Jay, is to Jamie, are we permitted to go forward without that required agricultural data statement?
I don't think so.
I, I believe that we have to have that.
Yep. I think Alan just came into the meeting. We can ask him.
What is this map with new equipment pad with inverter? What is this that's on my screen? Is this still from the Taff Road?
It sounds like it.
Okay.
Um, let me see if I can add that.
Hello?
Is Alan hooked in now?
Yeah. I think so. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Jamie, do you want to ask him the question?
The, the agricultural data statement pursuant to 305 of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law?
Yes.
Has not been filled out, I believe, or we have not seen it?
It should have been with the packet, but I can't guarantee where that is. I know exactly what that is. It's a, you know, you know what it is. I don't have a copy in front of me where I'm at, but we submitted everything that was forwarded to us to fill out.
And I do know that... Jamie, is that, is that a new thing? I don't recall ever doing that before.
Well, it's, it's done, and we usually, it's usually part of the package if the, if it's within 500 feet of a farm operation in an agricultural district.
This was part of an ag district, I think.
Yeah, we've done, we've done this before.
It's just, you just, it just flies under the radar. Usually, no one know, you know, it's done, isn't it, of course? So...
Yeah, I, we, we use it all the time. I know exactly what it is. I, I thought we filled that out with the seeker and, and the application and the, and the fee.
Is there any way to check that?
I do not have that. I have the folders right in front of me, and I don't have it. Okay.
Alan, I think it's obvious, and you may have answered this question before, but the purpose of the subdivision is to sell off those four barns?
There, there's a couple that's buying the barns with the house, too. They're buying, they're also looking to buy the 15-acre section.
Okay, all right. It, it looks like it's pretty obvious, but I thought I'd ask the question anyway.
Yes.
We certainly, Joe, can proceed with the public hearing, and we can wait until the next meeting to, for any resolution. But otherwise, SAKPA found no significant inter-county impacts.
Yeah, I think we can do everything except make any, make a final determination. So at this point, Madam Secretary, did we publish notice of publication?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to waive a reading?
I think we already did.
We did that part.
Yeah, we did it.
You know, ready?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
There you go. Seconded by Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is hereby open. Anyone here on behalf of the public?
See nothing in the Q and A, and I see nothing on Facebook. Hearing none, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Seconded.
Ann makes a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Fred seconded it.
Seconded by Fred. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is hereby closed. Alan, we're going, we're going to need to get that agricultural data statement, and then we can wrap, wrap this up.
Can you bear with me just a moment? I'm going to look in one spot, see if I have it here.
Okay.
Jamie, can we make a motion to approve subject to receiving that agricultural statement?
It's, it's part of the required submission, so it's really not a complete application.
Okay.
But we can, I mean, we can put it at the top of the agenda next week if it looks like that's where that's going, if you want to give everyone a kind of a feel-good about it.
Okay.
And then we're, we're just a couple weeks away from a meeting.
All right. Now, Lisa, why don't you put that number one on the agenda?
Okay. I can do that.
All right. I don't think we need a motion to continue. We'll, we'll simply continue at the next meeting on July 27th.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand up. It is an attendee by the name of David. David, we just request that you use the Q and A function, if you could, to participate in the meeting. And we'll give you just a moment to do that. I don't see a question yet. I will let you all know if something does come in. Sometimes attendees have hit hand up on accident, so... Okay.
Just as a brief side note, this is Alan. I just found the packet, and I do not see that form in there, so we'll fill one out and get it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Allison, are we okay with a hand up?
I have not seen any question come into the Q and A function, so...
Okay.
Oh, here it is. The app, so you have an attendee who asked a question. He said, "I think I missed the beginning. I think I'm okay with this, but what is the purpose of this subdivision?"
Alan, do you want to address that?
Yes, I'm sure that they would register who this person is, but the, it's a two-lot split, creating a 15 acres, which is inclusive of the house and the four barns, and the remaining 85.99 acres is just the balance of the farm fields and a little bit of woods. The, what we're doing is just dividing those two sections off as we have a party who's acquiring, would like to acquire the 15-acre parcel with the house and barns. Fairly simple.
Thank you, Alan. If the gentleman has further questions, can he raise his hand?
I don't see anything else.
Okay. Then the matter stands adjourned until the meeting on July 27th for the filing of the agricultural data statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 5538 North Berdick Street LLC. This is scheduled for a public hearing regarding site plan approval of a dentist's office, tax map number 86-2-7.1. Lisa, did we do notice of publication?
Yes, we did.
I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the notice.
So moved, Michael Roy. Seconded.
And seconded by Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the wa, there's a waiver of the reading of the notice of publication. The zone change has been granted. In this case, it was granted by the town board. We normally would go forward with the seeker at this point, but because the matter has not been heard by the ZBA, which is going to be a mandated process relative to the parking situation, the location of parking and numbers of parking, we will not go forward with seeker now. We'll hold seeker until later, but I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann and Beaty, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is hereby open. Is there anyone here who wanted to ask questions relative to the public hearing or make a statement?
Nothing on Facebook yet, nothing in Q and A. There is a pretty substantial lag in Facebook today, for some reason.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Ann to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We should not close the public hearing.
Correct.
We should keep it open until after the ZBA addresses us, because we have a totally different building.
Right.
I apologize again.
I do, too.
You're always ahead of the game, Rich. Okay, are you withdrawing the motion altogether?
I am.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is hereby continued, as will the seeker determination be continued. I would remind the board that we did receive three letters relative to this. Marcia Phillip, John Rose, and Patricia Schmidt. And they're all residents down at the Uri Village area. We can discuss that in more detail later. I think this matter will be continued after our next board night, July 27th.
Jamie has a, an item on here that we probably should consider making a recommendation to the ZBA relative to the parking. Have we done that? We haven't done that already, I don't think, have we?
We have not.
No.
No.
It, it does not have to be done at this meeting, but perhaps you want to discuss it, so there can be a decision at the next meeting as to whether, number one, you even want, want to make a recommendation or leave it totally to the ZBA, or, or weigh in, and what this board thinks about the parking in front versus in back.
Can you put parking in back of the building because of the contour of the land?
Not easily.
And the ZBA doesn't meet until August, so we have some time to discuss this, if we didn't want to do something tonight.
I, I would want to bring out the fact that our town zoning requires 59 spots, and their intent is to put 95 spots in. And we've got our determination from the county. The county planning board kicked back the recommendation, stating that they are also concerned with the number of parking spaces, and it's going to result in a decrease in the, the pervious soil, drainage issues. Their recommendation... Their recommendation is that we definitely deal with that issue of parking and possibly reduce that. Their recommendation is to reduce.
Joe, I think their lot coverage was under the 35%, even with the additional parking. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have the plans in front of me, but that was my recollection. I might be wrong.
Scott Freeman, you on?
Scott, what did you say?
I was just asking if Scott Freeman, you on? Can you confirm that? I believe we are.
Scott, you're muted.
He's muted.
I don't have the exact number, but I recall that we were under the lot coverage amount.
That was my recollection also.
I could provide that tomorrow.
And there's no need for a variance for additional parking. That would be more of a site plan decision by the planning board. The only, I think, issue that we have from a zoning standpoint is the parking in front.
The location of parking.
Right. It's not, I don't think that it's so much an issue of just the parking in front, but would this board entertain, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, just a question, that if it's going to be in the front, which really isn't allowed by code, and what impact would that have? Should it be reduced in number, or should there be some other consideration?
This is Chris Danaher. We have submitted, and speaking to the board or Jamie, we have submitted the application for the variance, and someone, I think it might have been Rich, is correct. It's the end of August. But obviously, a change in the parking changes the whole dynamic of the development of the site. So I'd like to get some better understanding of this board and its direction with regard to the location of the parking. I think we sort of have to, as the applicant, better understand that. I mean, the reason we designed it, one of the reasons we designed it this way is the understanding, the Erie Canal behind us, and hearing from the town board when we were going through the zoning process and actually talking about the site plan was to try to preserve that natural feature for those people that are utilizing the canal. So that weighed into that. But so we're trying to, I guess, we're trying to better understand where this board is with regards to that parking matter.
This is Rich. I thought the layout, the site plan, in my mind, was fine. I think that site works, having the parking in the front. It just makes sense based on what you're doing and how it looks. My only issue was in the way the building looked. But like I said, I'm just one vote. That's just my opinion. I think it works, though, from my standpoint.
You have questions about the appearance of the building, Rich, rather than...
I do. We haven't gotten much of how the outside of the building is going to look. It's an RM zone, which is a residential character. And I don't think what's been presented so far looks residential at all. Whether or not they can modify that is another whole discussion, but as far as the parking goes, I'm fine with it.
Well, maybe if we could, could we have Madonna from VIP Structures hop on and give a presentation, some of the updates that we've made? And given what we're going through, I have the samples here with me. I'm willing to make them available to anyone tomorrow, say around noon, at Brookley Drive. But as Madonna is presenting in just a moment, if we could, I'll be doing my best to have Anna White holding them up in front of the camera so people can see. Would you mind if we hopped into that? Maybe that'll address those concerns.
Personally, I can't make it at noon. And if the zoning board doesn't meet until August, hopefully, the full board, planning board, will be in the conference room before that. And that way, you can bring materials in so we can see it. There's nothing that's going to be done before the ZBA votes on a variance. Unless I'm mistaken, somebody has a different opinion.
Well, I think part of it is, is if your concern is on the overall building exterior, we'd like to be able to incorporate those comments, or at least review those comments with our client before that end-of-August meeting, if possible.
And we talked earlier, I'm not sure if you were on, of whether or not for our next meeting, we're going to be all together in the conference room. If it's not the next meeting, hopefully, it's the first meeting of August, and we can work through those things then, if that's not too late. It's just, there's no way I can make tomorrow at noon.
And that's fine. I can be available on your schedule. I live right up the street. I live by Dunkin' Donuts, so I can meet you anywhere. Just know that I didn't expect to be up against a wall in terms of schedule back in February when I initially sat down with the combined board. Now, my back is a bit against the wall with regards to starting construction, really by the end of August, getting dried in before the snow falls. And it's a deadline that isn't based on COVID. But I can be available anytime you'd like. We'd really love to get actionable feedback from this evening. And if we could, if there's a chance of it, even coordinating, putting to the coordinated meeting between the ZBA and the planning board, try to keep this on an actionable schedule, if that's possible.
Regarding the parking, is any of it to be held? I mean, can any of it be held like in grass, grassed area, or do you need all those actual parking spaces?
We'd be open to that. A couple of our concerns are, firstly, look at where the site is, and there's really not much around us. We know how the average resident is, and if the lot is full, they're parking on the road, and we all know that is not a safe place to park in this corner.
But do you think that you're...
We have enough.
You think you're going to use that right away? Yeah.
You know, if you wanted a bank, 10 or 15 spaces for some period of time, or put them on grass, we'd be open to that. We'd be really concerned going below that, given the scale of the project.
Could I share my screen and show the spaces that I would propose to land bank?
Are we able to do that, Allison?
Here we go. This is Rich again. Joe, I'm looking at this, and I think this is probably a premature discussion. We don't even know if this will be the layout until they get a variance. So where the parking is banked and where the parking is, is an open issue until we find out what the ZBA says.
Well, you're right about that, Rich, but at the same time, if we're going to make a recommendation to the zoning board as to what our feeling is, what they should do, I think parking comes back into play again as part of that recommendation.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, I think we've heard from Rich what he thinks about the parking in the front. We're looking at the plan, and I understand the applicant, you know, would like some idea, maybe what the discussion points are on that issue of the front versus the rear parking. Of course, we're not looking at a plan that would show the building closer to the road right now.
This is Fred Gilbert. My opinion is that I kind of like the parking in the front because as you come around that curve on Berdick Street, you're pretty much going to be looking over the top of cars that are parked down there, I think. You know, because it's down below the street level and seeing the building. And I think it would look just fine. And plus, the case was made for the view from the building out the back across the canal being a big plus for the people that are working and are visiting there. And the view from the canal of the building is of the, I mean, from the canal is enhanced. It's not got a parking lot to look at.
I agree, Fred. Plus, if you look at the bump out, the little bump out of the building in the back, if I'm not mistaken, those are all dental chairs. That's probably going to be a glass wall so they can look out to the back of the property. And if you put the parking in the rear, that would now be facing North Berdick Street. Doesn't make sense. Agree.
The other thing we did since the last meeting is we regraded the detention basin to bring it closer to the building. And we made, this is all untouched vegetation here, so we really finessed the plan. We filled around the medical office building chairs here, and we preserved some additional green space here. And getting back to the land bank, you have 15 to 20 cars right here. We could proceed with this plan as is and just bank these, I think it's about 16, 17 spaces right there.
The reason that we would do that is, it has to do with the SWIP plan, with the stormwater plan, because otherwise, I don't care.
I think, Fred, the discussion was, there's too much impervious material, even though my recollection again was they were still under the 35% lot coverage.
Yeah, we're at 32%. I just checked that number.
Yeah, I thought I remembered that.
I think some people were concerned about the visual aspect of it. So that would do something for the visual.
But this first bay of parking is 6, 8 feet below the part, the drive lane. So when you're driving on Berdick, you're going to be looking over the top of the parking, at least for the first two rows. And then we have plant material in these four islands here, and then we have plant material in this island here, this island here. We have plants here and plants here. So you're going to get a filtered vegetative view of the building. To me, it reminds me of a Wild Waters Park-type building, which I think's done quite well. There's a lot of parking in Wild Waters, but there's also a lot of plant buffer between the road and the building, and it really makes for a nice park-like experience. And it's kind of a balance between, hey, we're open for business, but it's not Erie Boulevard where there's very little plant material.
And this plan...
Jamie.
...really highlight how big those planters are. These are, not that anybody can see my mouth moving, but up against the road, those planters are size of three spaces. They have trees. There's a lot of plant material here.
Jamie, I heard what you said is that there's a concern of the way it looks. But the way I view it is, even though we're talking about different zoning classifications, you drive up North Berdick Street, and you look over at Target and Tops, all the parkings in front of the buildings. You go further up, you got the car dealership with parking in front of the buildings. You go to the medical center, you've got parking in front of the building. You've got parking in front of Americew. You've got parking on the roadside of the cruise ship on land. I can't remember the name of it. So I don't think it's that offensive, and I think it's in keeping with what's around there.
I'm inclined to agree with you, Rich. Actually, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, I think it works. And maybe it's just a unique area, but I think it works.
I agree with Mike and Rich. I think that there's nothing wrong with the plan. I think it's fine just the way it is, and that the concerns seem to be taken care of by the design, by the landscaping, and by the change in altitude between the road and the piece of property.
I mean, I live right here, and what they're saying about the land itself, there's a serious dip right there once you come around that corner.
Yep.
I mean, the elevation drops right off.
So I don't know how others feel, but should, is it possible to make a motion to recommend to the ZBA that we are in favor or that we're comfortable with the parking in front? I don't know how that works. We've never done it before.
But what you might want to do, I heard almost everyone, I didn't hear from Anne, I didn't hear Joe, but I heard everyone say in one way or the other that they have a comfort level with the parking. What, because we have several meetings, or at least is it one or two more meetings before that, I think this applicant wanted to get a kind of a feeling of where this board was going. But I think what this board may want to do is make a formal motion where we can put some of the findings and some of the things that you all just said into a motion for the ZBA so that they can consider that.
But don't get me wrong, for parking, I think it's great the way it is. It's just that if you're looking to reduce the appearance of it, that's why I was looking to, you know, to bank some of those. But I don't think you can put parking back there because of the elevation of the land there.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, that's how I look at it. I was just looking for ways to soften it if that was a problem, because I know it's not allowed there. We'd have to make a, we'd get a variance for that.
So I think I'm the one, a minority of one. Aesthetically, I agree with you all that right now, all the other buildings on that Berdick Street all have parking lots right in front of the buildings, in front of the structures. But I think aesthetically, it would look a lot better behind. But it's very clear that I'm a minority of one. So I would entertain a motion if somebody wants to make a motion relative to a recommendation for the zoning board of appeals.
I would move that we recommend parking, that we are in favor of the parking in front, pretty much as the plan is presented.
I'd second that.
Motion made by Fred and second by Arnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one may. Motion carries. So we're going to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that they approve the variance relative to parking location.
Yep.
There's only one thing that Rich brought up that's really kind of a bigger problem, and that's with the RM zoning. You know, that came into being, as I understand it, to accommodate all of the changes that were happening along places like, especially along Erie Boulevard or Genesee Street, I'm sorry. And when we build something new, like not only this property, but it also comes into play over on Ender's Road, you know, which we're going to talk about sometime soon. It's not the same RM that was the initial reason for the zoning to be developed, I don't believe. For whatever that's worth.
Fred, I agree, and that's why when we get into the site plan, we can talk more about bank parking. We can talk about what materials we use on the outside of the building, so on and so forth. And we can get involved in it at that point if the variance is approved. I mean, who knows?
Yeah. Okay.
As to, just a question. So, and I understand that meeting's left open, and we've made the application for the variance, and we'll go before that board in August. But is this board also exploring the issue of the building? Is this board at subsequent meetings before the ZBA meeting willing to discuss the features of the building if we are able to present that, understanding that we still need that variance from the ZBA?
Chris, again, I'm just one person, but I don't have a problem discussing it. Makes sense to try to move it along.
I don't mind either.
Sounds fine to me.
Me too.
Okay, so if we could be on that next meeting, we can really get into some detail regarding, stay away from the parking, but get into the details, the rest of the details regarding the site and the building.
Is there any other time that the materials will be available besides 1 o'clock tomorrow?
If you want to have Lisa or Allison coordinate with me, I live very close. I can come down at any time that works for the board.
I've got a meeting tomorrow. I want to get one at 12:00. But after that, I'm available whenever they set it up. It's just tomorrow's bed.
I'll coordinate with Lisa for a time.
Oh, great.
I can meet people anywhere.
Great.
Sounds good.
Scott, in addition to the material, if those elevations can be, I didn't think they looked too realistic. If they could be cleaned up so we'd get a good idea of what that building's going to look like when it's completed, that would be helpful also.
Sure. Could I actually let Madonna just pop it up on the screen right now? Would you guys be open to that?
I can't hear. What did you ask?
Would you be open to letting Madonna put that on the screen right now, if you'd like? Or do you want me to have just a larger print scale of that available?
That's what I'd like to have.
Okay, I know these are weird times. It's just kind of hard to do from our living rooms, but... absolutely, I'll have that available.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Scott, if you'd like, I'd attend that meeting with you once you know when it is with the town board so we can discuss any questions or options, if they'd like to vocalize them.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Just show me some times that work for the board. Um, and close by.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So I'm having a little trouble hearing. The neighbors decided to mow their lawn. Is this time for July twenty-seventh?
Yes.
To try to just make sure we're all in agreement on the site plan relative to the building itself.
Yep, we can put them back on for the twenty-seventh. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Scott.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
So we'll continue site plan review on the twenty-seventh. And as soon as the zoning board of appeals makes a determination, then we'll move forward with regard to closing the public hearing. And the rest. Next item on the agenda, bulk renewables. This is a special permit application and site plan for the property located at five zero six two North Eagle Village Road in Manlyas. The town board recently changed the local law so that from this point forward, all special permits will go directly to the planning board. And the planning board will hear the special permit applications and site plan applications at the same time. There will be no longer referrals back and forth. So this matter is on in front of us for special permit and site plan. I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on both matters at the same time.
So moved.
Second.
That was a motion by Mike and second by Rich.
What's the date?
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we have a date?
Any opposed?
Should we have a date, Joe? In that motion?
Lisa?
Um, yep, July twenty-seventh at approximately six thirty-five PM.
Okay. If we amend the motion, I'll second it.
I move we amend the motion to include the date and time.
Okay.
I, I think we're wrapped up on that. So July twenty-seventh. Do we need to have a vote on the amended motion?
I think so. We need one.
Okay, we've got an amended motion for July twenty-seventh for public hearing on both matters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I answer? Can I answer your question, Joe? I don't know if anybody other than Doug and I walked the one on North Eagle Village because of the letters that we received. They, they staked it so you could see the, the perimeters of the, where the, the solar array will go. The panels will be facing North Eagle Village Road. So the people in the houses that wrote the letters are going to be looking at the side of the panels. But you get a very good take of where it's going to be and what view the houses are going to have of the solar array if you go and walk it. So if you haven't done it, I would recommend it before uh, maybe the public hearing, definitely before we vote on it. Would you agree, Doug? Okay. Yes, yeah. If you go out there, I think you'll get a good feel for what's going on there. There were a couple of things that came up to Rich and I just walking out there. And actually, Mr. Shapiro was out there the day we were out there, and we got some good insight from him, too. So I'd highly recommend it. Yep.
It seemed to me when I was there that there's really only two houses that have any impact at all, any visual impact. And I think that's one thing the board is going to have to decide. Are these solar arrays offensive to be viewed at by neighbors? And that's the decision we're going to have to make ultimately. A public hearing would maybe shed some light on what people are thinking.
Yeah, there's two areas, Joe, in particular, where the trees break. And those houses are going to have another, unobstructed view of the solar arrays. So other than that, at least when the leaves are on the trees for six months of the year, they won't be able to see it. But in the wintertime, they're going to be looking at it the whole time. And I don't think there's any getting around that with a
No, I, I agree with, with what Rich just said, because I went up and saw it, too. And, you know, I tried to put myself in, in their shoes, so as long as the foliage is there and it's summertime, it's great. But after that.
Yep.
Okay. These are all things we need to think about and discuss. So let's hear the public and see what they have to say. Uh, I think we, I've only received one letter, though, on this project. Lisa, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And when, when we meet next time, we need to be prepared. And I, I will, I think I sent to everyone the criterion, and we, and we'll have to answer that criterion much the same way that a zoning board of appeals answers criterion. Is it, and that's the, the special permit process. So it's a little, it's something different. Um, we've, we've had a lot of, we've had experience with special permits, but this body has never been the body that actually made the final decision. So we'll be going through that for the first time.
Okay. Now, a sister application is going to be the fault renewables for a special permit and site plan approval for a solar array at eight five zero seven Green Lake Road in Fayetteville. And that's text map number eighty-two dash two dash fifteen point one. They had previously received a special permit and site plan approval for a prior plan. They're using that prior plan, but they're expanding it southerly. We need a public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I thought we said both of the public hearings in the last motion.
I think what Joe was, I think Joe was doing was he was saying site plan and special permit. Both of those will be heard at the same time. And now the next one.
Okay. I thought we were doing the flip. Okay. I apologize again.
So moved for public hearing.
Motion by Mike for public hearing.
On the twenty-seventh?
On the twenty-seventh of July, with regard to both special permit and site plan. Any second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is scheduled for July twenty-seventh.
Correct.
The next item on the agenda is an application by Dennis Flynn. This is with regard to a special permit and site plan for dog group.
Boarding, dog boarding.
Boarding.
Yes.
Dog boarding. Thank you.
May I interrupt? May I interrupt? There's no boarding. It's, it's daycare and grooming, and it'll be five days a week. No dog, no dogs overnight.
Is this Dennis?
Gary Mazurkowitz. The architect.
Okay.
Are you representing Kirkville Road?
Uh, I'm sorry. I jumped
Did I add the wrong dog applicant? I'm sorry. No, no, Dennis, Dennis is there, but there's two at the right back to back. So we want to talk to Dennis right now.
What else can go wrong?
I'm going to mute, I'll mute, I'll mute this dog group, I'll mute this dog applicant. Please hold.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're go, we're going to the application by Dennis Flynn specifically Kirkville Road, seventy-four eighteen Kirkville Road for dog boarding.
Correct.
Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do?
Uh, we have an existing doggy daycare boarding area out in Tittenangle. We just want to relocate to this location. It's, it's on my residence. I have a building ready to go. It's, I've shown it on the tax map. Uh, in detail as far as what we have on our property. I don't know if you have that in front of you.
Uh, I can put, I can open this up. I just want to make sure I have the right ones. So this is now I don't trust myself. Um, so I have, I have the Kirkville Road survey up in front of me. Does that come right, everybody?
Yep.
Yes. I am going to share that screen. Let me know when you can see it.
Yeah, that's it. So these are all, they're to my house towards the road. Um, all the shaded area is blacktop, and then there's a three-car garage in the back. That's where I want to start housing dogs. And, uh, in the, behind that, we're probably going to have a fenced-in area. A privacy fence. So we're basically moving our, we're looking to move our operation.
And downsize the operation.
How many dogs do you currently board?
Anywhere from zero to ten.
What is to the west of you? I see you've got wooded in behind you to the south, open field to the east. What's on the west?
There's a, there's a house on that property. Uh, it's probably uh, if you can, I'm not sure if I can give you exact detail on that. It, it is closer to the road, and it is probably fifty, seventy-five yards from my property line.
Allison, are you able to pull up the, uh, the Google Earth?
Yep. Yep. You just give me one second and I will work on that. You're looking for Google Earth and not the county, correct?
Whatever is our best view, maybe street view.
Whatever's easiest. Just something that gives us an overview.
Thank you, Doug.
Dennis, Dennis, I would imagine that six-foot privacy fence, the dogs will be out there for daytime or whatever.
Yeah, just to go to the bathroom, get some sunshine, but they're in and out while we're, you know, during the day. At night, they'd be inside.
They will be supervised at all times when they are outside.
Yeah.
And what's the, what? What's the area of the fenced-in portion? And what's the size or square footage of the three-car garage that will now be a, a boarding area?
The garage right now, it's twenty-two by thirty-two. And the fenced-in area is kind of pretty much as I shown it, they're going straight back. Probably twenty to thirty feet back.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, everybody.
And to the wooded area where I, um, the owner there has livestock, chickens and so on. So he's basically a agricultural. Um, yeah, so you're going to have to, for some reason, that's not showing. Oh. I, that doesn't look, no, that's North Kirkville Road.
Ew. All right, hang on one second. I'm
No problem.
Let me see. Let's see if it does this. Okay, you guys are going to get the nice, uh, tour of Google Earth. There we go.
We can cruise down the road a little ways.
I will add works well under pressure to my resume. Um, does that look right, everybody?
That's awesome.
All right, there you go.
That's it.
Listen, we just keep trying. That's right.
So there is a house to the east also. There is the open field, but then there's a house just a little bit further than the house to the west.
Yep, yep. That's an open field between the properties. And that's all agricultural. So that white house to the west is their old Cartino farm. Um, he had farmed that at old, he's got twenty-seven acres there that he, he was farming at one point. And now I just, to the grass area, they just mull it. And then obviously behind us, all the way back to Canterbury Woods is all woods.
Okay.
And Manoa.
All right, thank you.
And then to
Dennis, have you talked to either of your two neighbors? This is Joe Lubbia. Have you talked to either of anyone in the east or the west side about what you're doing?
Yeah, I talked to the closest neighbor and he had no problem with it.
Now, was that Gary Cartino?
Uh, no, that was, uh, Gary. I forget his last name. He's the one to the east of me.
Left.
No, that's west. That's east.
Anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Is, is the, right now, is that garage insulated?
Yes.
And this may be getting into questions that we probably would get into later. But is there water to the garage?
Uh, at the present time, yes.
At the present time, yes?
Yeah, yeah, we have water there.
Is it hooked? Are you hooked into the septic tank?
Uh, no, it's just a, a sink. I don't really use it for anything other than just to wash my hands. And I just have a, a, a basin at the outside of it, so. But if I end up bringing up permanent water, this is only temporary water.
Are you on a well there?
Uh, there is a well on the property, yes, but I'm using public water.
Okay.
To the, to the, if you can see it, there's a, you can see the well. It's an open well. It's original well to the house. Uh, the back corner of the garage, you can see a little grade area.
Yep.
That's a, that's a well.
Well, don't you anticipate using a lot more water if you're boarding dogs in that area?
Uh, nothing more than drink, drinking water for dogs.
Washing the floors? I mean, I got to believe
Yeah, there'll be a little bit of water.
Okay, I guess I gotta give some thought to that.
Any other questions?
On your diagram, Joe, I gotta, I do have a question. I don't, on this diagram I'm looking at here, you've up to the top, it says removed. What is it you're removing?
That was gone a long time. There was a greenhouse years ago on the, and the, this is the original um, survey for when I bought it back in eighty-seven.
So where it says removed, there's nothing there now?
No. No, that was just like a little tiny greenhouse at the original owners. They used to have a, a washing, where they washed their vegetables or whatever. But I've taken that out. It's just a concrete um, foundation, so to speak.
Okay, Lisa, we're going to need to schedule this. What date, what date would we schedule if we hear a motion for public hearing?
I believe, Joe, we, we do need an updated sign-stamped survey showing existing conditions.
I would agree, yeah.
Um, uh, it's pretty much the same as what you see here. I, except for that one little piece of concrete that I showed removed. There's nothing else changed.
It, it is a requirement for It, it is a requirement for it to have the up-to-date survey. That's so that the planning board knows what they're approving. And if, it could also show the driveway and that configuration, that would be great if that would, would go on it as well.
What year was on that survey? I didn't see it.
88.
Yeah. It's June 88.
Yep. I, I didn't get a package on this one. I got lost.
It, it sort of wasn't a complete application without the survey, so I don't know, you know, maybe that's why it didn't get to you.
So Jamie, what you're saying is we shouldn't schedule a public hearing until we have a completed application?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, all right.
Well, we weren't, we weren't told we were missing anything. I thought I had a completed package. So this survey.
The survey is Doug Lear, and he's still available. He still has his office out in Liverpool. He could probably do an update for you fairly quickly.
And who is this? The original one?
Yeah, your survey was done by Doug Lear.
Okay.
He's pretty expeditious.
Beg your pardon?
He's quite expeditious on getting the redates done, if he's done the survey in the past.
Okay.
So I'm sorry about that, but we, we have to have a complete package. And, uh, when we get an up-to-date survey, we'll have a complete package.
Okay. When would we meet again on this?
We, we meet again on July 27th. Do you think you can get it filed within two weeks?
Uh, I'll do what I can to get a new survey and see how long that would take.
If, um, if, this, this matter will, will be continued. So even if you bring the survey at the last minute, notwithstanding what happened with the first application, Rich, then we could, we can set it for a public hearing. So I, I think again, if you call Doug Lear right away, let him know what the nature is of your request, um, hopefully he can accommodate you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna continue the hearing. And why don't you be in touch with the secretary for the planning board? Uh, as soon as you get the survey, give us a call at the planning board, okay?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We are now on a, uh, similar application. This is the application by Sarah Williams for a, a village groomer, a special permit and site plan approval for dog grooming. And this location is 8064 East Tennessee Street Fayetteville, tax map number 90-1-10.1.
And, and Joe, I, I sent, uh, some memos around earlier. I see that I, I got them mixed up as well. That this, uh, this is the one that does have the, um, appropriate survey and site plan information.
Does it? Because I didn't think it was passed Monday. Mine's dated 83.
Of this one?
Yep.
As well?
Yep.
The one miss, that, um, Mr. Mazurkowitz put in?
Yes.
It is, it is, um, dated 83, but it is current. And I have, uh, indicated, um, for instance, the decks out back don't appear, but they, they are there. Uh, I've showed the gravel driveway the way it is, that the trees and whatever are there. And, uh, I've shown the walkway that we'd like to put in. But she doesn't own the property. It's contingent upon, um, favorable approval from the board. So we didn't do, uh, we did just enough to show you what we'd like to do and what's there.
But what you, what you just talked about, the improvements that will be made in the future, is not on the survey. It's on a, a drawing that I don't know where it came from.
Uh, I, I did it, a color drawing?
Oh, okay. It is on the survey, but it's the 83 survey. Yes, the color.
Right, right. We, that's the only site plan that exists. It wasn't meant to be a survey. It was meant to be a site plan showing existing conditions and what's proposed to, to do.
Well, I think, Jamie, don't, don't we have the same problem with this one as, as the other one? We need an updated survey?
Doug, is, is it your opinion that this, if it's professionally stamped over the survey, that it's acceptable? I'm gonna, I'm gonna run that to.
It didn't look like, it didn't look like there were any site changes. Um, it, it's not an up-to-date survey, um, but it looks like, um, what is there on the underlying drawing that you all have um, is consistent to the natural contours and the setbacks that are existing on the site, based on the site visit I did.
But we can't tell one applicant they need an updated survey and another one they don't.
I, I believe the codes officer has relayed that to both of these applicants, that an updated survey would be needed.
Uh, I have not heard that until this moment.
Am I wrong? I kind of thought the code required a professional report, but it didn't have to be a survey report. That it also could qualify as an architect's report or an engineer's. Am I wrong?
I'm going to look at that, but I, I thought that it, if it's professionally, if it's a professional stamp, that we might be okay with it. I'm gonna check that.
I can certainly stamp it.
The existing.
What's perfection?
Architect.
The existing condition survey from 83 is similar to what we just did on the last applicant. And the color drawing is kind of overlaid on that survey of what they want to do. So we do not have an updated survey for this property. So I, I'm not sure what we need, but we gotta be consistent, I think.
No, I, I agree. I, but the question that I'm, I have, that I don't know the answer to, um, what kind of professional, um, stamp is appropriate on here?
Okay.
If he does a site plan and it's a professional stamp, are we okay with that or do we still need a survey? And I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that right offhand. Um, I too was confused about what the, with these two applications.
I, I think, Jamie, typically you start with a survey and then an engineer would take it to do the site plan. And he would put a stamp on it, but I, I don't know. I'm not sure what the details.
I think you're right about that, but I just, I want to see what our code says.
Okay, all right.
I think the code is going to say that if it's done by a licensed professional, we're all set. But I, I'm with Jamie. I have to look it up one more time.
So I guess what needs to be done is that somebody needs to get back to, well, I was gonna say Sarah Williams or whoever's speaking on her behalf right now, Gary.
Gary.
With that, with that answer. Okay, that being the case, then we cannot schedule this at this time for a public hearing or, uh, on either, on either the, uh, special permit or the site plan. But we could get it scheduled, uh, if and when we get a definitive answer.
I'll get an answer, uh, right away, um, discuss it with Doug, and then we could set the public hearing next time if this is sufficient. Otherwise, we'll let the applicant know he needs the updated survey.
So it does say that the site plan, uh, must be prepared by an architect, landscape architect or engineer, land, land surveyor or planner.
Well, I'm the architect.
But, but it's not stamped.
Okay, I can, easily enough for me to do.
If that's the word, if that's what the code says, we, and he stamps it tomorrow, I think we can, uh, we can call for the public hearing today because we know we're going to have that.
Sure. And, and the rest of the requirements, you know, it looks like a pretty simple site. You know, we may have some lingering issues, but, you know, it talks about traffic circulation, um, proposed buildings, uh, engineering plans, feasibility, construction sequencing, pedestrian walks, which, which he has shown, um, lighting, et cetera. So, um, from, from what I've seen, I mean, it looks like it's pretty close. And if he stamped it, I would concur with you, Jamie.
Okay. Now Doug, what, what you read, what I think you read, is that right out of the code relative to, uh, the engineer, architect or surveyor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then if Gary, I would entertain a conditional motion conditioned on Gary actually getting that stamped and certified and, and, uh, file that with the board. But I would entertain a motion to schedule public hearing for both, uh, special permit and site plan.
On July 47th? On July 27th?
For July 27th.
July 27th at 6:45?
45-ish. Yep.
I make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Fred and Mike. Did you second it?
No, I think I already made the motion originally.
Actually, I think you did too.
Oh, really? I'm sorry.
Then I'm looking at consider Mike having made the motion and Fred seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
Uh, I, I'm opposed because we're not being consistent. So one, one no.
Okay. Okay. Motion still carries. Sir, we'll sit on 27th, but we're gonna see you a lot quicker than that as far as filing that certified drawing. Okay?
Tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, um, at whatever time you like, wherever.
Town, town offices. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is an application by Chris Ballinger. This is for the property located at 7137 East Tennessee Street Fayetteville. It's for a site plan amendment, more particularly a roofed porch and deck at that location. Tax map number 85-7-11. Is there anyone present on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I'm here, Chris Ballinger.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Chris, can you tell us what you're doing to your, what you're intending to do with your property and why?
Yeah, the existing porch is a, um, small porch with a ramp to the porch. And it is, it's in need of, uh, extensive repairs. And rather than repair what is there, we thought that we would upgrade up and build something a little bit nicer. So that's what we're trying to do. A little covered porch, um, with a ramp. Um, that's it.
I think it looks good.
Thank you. Me too.
I'm gonna pull that up, uh, Allison, please.
Any other questions? So we need to schedule a public hearing?
We do?
So it's going for a very, they're going for a variance. It's going to be on this week, um, because of the setback. It's a little bit bigger, so there's a setback issue. But, um, we can call the public hearing. If they don't get the variance, then we'll need the, we probably, if the only thing they're doing is expanding the, um, the porch, if somehow the ZBA doesn't allow it, they probably just will withdraw it because it'll just be a repair and replace issue. Uh, right, Chris? There's no, um, nothing else on the site?
We're going for the, we're going to the ZBA because we currently, we have a 40-foot setback in our location. And we are encroaching by about four inches onto that 40-foot setback. And we would like to extend that probably five to six inches more. So that puts us in front of a ZBA.
What date does the ZBA meet this month?
It is this Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay. So Jamie, if we make a motion to have a public hearing at our next meeting and the variance is not approved, which I doubt if that's gonna happen. But if it's not approved, what do we do then?
I don't think he's going, uh, to need any site plan approval at all because he'll just be replacing what's there.
My, my concern is that we have not been scheduling things when we still need another board to make a determination before we're permitted to go forward. If we schedule the, the public hearing without the approval of the ZBA, it's almost like we're foregoing what their thoughts might be and proceeding without them. I would prefer not to schedule until the ZBA has made a ruling.
Would I still have time?
You make a good point. That's a good point.
Would I still have time for make it, to make it for the next meeting if, uh, if I get approval on Thursday?
No, I think.
There, therein lies, therein lies the rub, right?
Right.
It's like, it's a month away. Um, often the, the person hasn't made application to the ZBA. I don't know if there's any exception for that. I would.
I, I agree with what Joe said. If we schedule a public hearing, we're kind of inserting ourselves in the process where we probably shouldn't be. Does anybody feel to the contrary?
No, I, I agree with both Joe and Rich.
Okay, then I think we need to schedule this for after the ZBA and, uh, refrain from making any requests for public hearings until we get a final determination from the ZBA. And as soon as they make a determination at our very next hearing, we'll entertain motions for public hearings on both. Okay?
Sounds like a plan. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an application by, um, J.S. Penizato relative to a zone change recommendation. 4581 Enders Road, Annes. This is tax map number 114, 01-13.1. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yep, John and Stella are here.
Hello? Would you want to explain to us what you're looking to do and why?
I can't hear. Dave, I see over there. No?
Hello?
Hi.
Stella, we're not hearing you now.
Yes, Stella, you can't be near, uh, John if he also has Zoom open or it'll create audio feedback.
Is that better?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Stella, they've asked you to discuss, um, your application.
Basically, we're just asking for a zone change from R and to C A. I believe our attorneys on our engineer, Greg should be on.
Uh, Mr. Scrumo is your.
Or John Landley wanted to speak also.
Okay. Uh, I have him in the meeting as well. Uh, so John, if you want to start your video. And then did you, and you said Mr. Scrumo was here for you as well?
Yeah, he should be.
Okay, I will move him up to a panelist as well. All right. All right.
Are we unmuted?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Greg will be able to help out. I'm John Langy. I'm the attorney for the applicant matter. As you guys can, as you folks can see, the Penizatos, of course, have been working with the town board now for a number of years seeking a zone change for their premises in order to, in this instance, put the property back into, back into use. So the request tonight is for a positive recommendation back to the town board for a proposed zone change from its existing designation of RM to commercial A. And of course, you're all familiar with the proposed, the allowed uses subject especially per and by site plan. In, in the commercial A district, we think that any of those would fit nicely. And of course, it'd be subject to a specific site plan approval at a future time. Greg Scrumo has submitted a traffic study to show you that any of the proposed uses would result in no negative impact with regards to traffic. I'll let Greg speak to that, but at this instance, we submitted the application to the town board. They were kind enough to refer it to the planning board and tonight we would like to have a positive recommendation for the town board to go forward with a, with a proposal for the public hearing on the zone change itself.
As John said, we, we performed a traffic study for the project back when, when it was a daycare being proposed in there. And as part of that, we, we did some, some scenarios with various potential uses for that front parcel. The most heavy use would be a convenience store with gas, like 12 gas pumps, 6,000 square feet, something typical that you'd see nowadays. And even with that scenario, although there was some minor degradation of traffic timing at the signal, there was nothing that brought any level of service down a letter grade or even any significant amount. So that was the, that was the study that we did back in 2017 and that traffic has really not changed much. And we've seen that pretty consistently throughout the county with the exception of a couple of minor areas where it does go up a little bit. Traffic seems to be leveling off or increasing very slightly. I think that traffic study still holds for today.
I've got a question on this. Unless I'm wrong, of course. Wasn't there an application about a year ago to the town board for a zone change to CB?
Oh, that was correct. There was a zone change application. That application was acted on by the town board. And subsequently, an article 78 of hybrid declaratory judgment action was brought on behalf of the property owners against the town. That case is pending. And what we're attempting to do here is find some sort of a middle ground. Basically, at the, at the suggestion of representatives of the town board, we were asked to consider something lesser than the commercial B zoning designation. So the Penizatos were kind enough to take that into consideration and place this application before the town board, which is then referred to the planning board.
John, did I understand that the litigation has not been dismissed at this time?
No, it's not been dismissed at all. That's, that's correct. The idea here is that the parties would work cooperatively, cooperatively to find something that's more palatable to perhaps certain town board members, but at the same time, give the Penizatos a chance to introduce an acceptable commercial use of the property.
I may be getting into areas that really aren't planning board issues, but I'm going to ask it anyway. If CA is granted, what happens to the litigation?
That'll have to be decided at a future date. So this, there's, there's no contract or deal worked out here. The idea would be to see if the Penizatos can get the commercial A zoning and pursue one of the uses that are allowed under that. So there's no contingencies, if you will.
So they could, they could continue on with the litigation even after being granted CA?
Well, that would have to be a decision by the Penizatos in the future. But that should not, that should not factor into any decisions made for land use whatsoever. It should be based on its own merits.
I just want to get an understanding of what's going on. That's all.
Sure. Yeah.
Do want to bring up, am I, I'm not muted, am I?
We hear you.
Okay, good. I had, because I'm pulling up a different screen. Just want to make sure that I'm still there. So, commercial district CA, some things that are allowed, just for discussion purposes. All structures and uses permitted in and are free in the neighborhood shopping district as well as the following. Hotels, any retail or business or personal service carried on in enclosed buildings and such manufacturing, which is incidental to the preparation of products to be sold on the premises to the ultimate consumer. Banks, including drive-through services, retail establishments with associated drive-through services, indoor theaters, restaurants serving patrons indoors, if anyone can ever get indoors again. Such indoor restaurants may serve patrons outdoors upon the issuance of a special permit. Outdoor sales on a small scale as determined by the town board shall be permitted only upon the issuance of a special use permit. And that's slightly, it's supposed to be a less intensive use than the CB, which was requested before. And it has warehouses, commercial repair garages, some other, and drive-in, drive-in establishments. So it's the position, I think of the, of our code that it would, there would not be drive-in restaurants in, in this district.
Drive-in or drive-through? That's two names.
I, well. It says drive-in. But I, it might be including drive-through. I'd have to look at that. I guess the other thing that I would like to bring up is that at this, at the next town board meeting, there's going to be a, an initial presentation of a complete modification of the zoning codes. I'm back, I'm back. With respect to each, we're, the board had, the, the subcommittee has, that was set up by the town board. I, it's got to be at least two years that it's been, that it's been worked on. Where our code is going to go to a kind of a check, a checkmark chart situation. So you can more easily look at where everything is. And there is a new district that's planned. It's called transitional business districts TB, which is something that is kind of less intense, I think, than CB is the intent. And I did circulate that and I'd like the board to look at that. Right now, this is, this legislation is on track for an initial presentation and ultimately it, it does change a lot of the uses in the various districts. So that's going to become public next week. Allison, was that the timeline? I, I don't have that in front of me.
There will be an informational meeting on July 22 at 5:00 PM and the recording that goes through all of it will be posted on the website some point this week, I believe.
And I am not by any means suggesting that this board, you know, hold off entirely on this application. What I am, what I am suggesting is that members of this board, to the extent possible, go to that initial presentation. And I believe there's also going to be a video available to understand what these changes in the code are going to be. It's, it's on a track for potential passing maybe by September.
Allison, are you still on that subcommittee?
I am.
And that was when we were working on it before, that was like a in-between neighborhood shopping and CA, correct?
Correct. This is.
And that's, it's still where they're at with that?
Correct. This is a continuation of the John Loeffler spreadsheet continuum that had all the zones and where the gap was and, and so this is the, the grand finale of that project.
Is it more or less where it was the end of last year? Or has, have changes been made?
It's, it's way beyond the end of last year.
Okay, okay.
But the spirit of it, the spirit of it is the same, I would say.
So I, I would think would be prudent to wait till that comes out to see if there's something else we could do.
I, I'm not, well, let, let me just say that I.
Let me, Tom?
I think we need a more
Let me say something.
We need a more fervent discussion about it before that decision is, is made. Certainly between now and next week. Because this is the first time this board has seen it. I don't think you're ready for a recommendation this week, but you might be next week and maybe the recommendation is yes, or maybe it's no, or maybe it's.
Jamie, may I, may I ask a quick question, which is this, this preview of this transitional business district you're talking about? Is it, to your knowledge, is it related to the parcel that's here tonight, which is the Penizato parcel?
It's a floating zone.
Do you know what the, whether, that this parcel is, I think it's just a little under two acres. Would it qualify for that?
Yes.
Do you know whether it had, what, what the potential uses could be, just generally speaking?
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to press. It's just that we're here.
No, I, no, I totally.
Been in a lawsuit for six months now to hear about this.
Right.
Throws me off quite, quite honestly. And I thought Tim might have maybe previewed that for me since he knew I was going to be here tonight.
Probably not, because I really just talked to him about it. So I don't want to throw him under the bus at all. It's not, it's not him.
I believe, I believe I saw this or saw a part of it and it doesn't really, it won't work for our parcel.
Off the table.
Which is, which is why we still went for CA. We thought it was a good compromise.
Yeah. So that's off the table.
I'm, where would you have seen it?
I believe I spoke to one of the, the town board members about it. But she brought it up to me and I said, okay, what can go in this zone? And it's, it's basically glorified, glorified our, um, basically is the way I read it.
Somebody said it was off the table. Who was that? I didn't see anybody say anything.
Jamie, I have. Jamie, I have transitional business open in front of me. Did you want me to read that?
Yeah.
Well, I, I also, I have it, but it doesn't have the uses. I, I think it's really the chart, if you feel like.
Chart?
Well, sure. I mean, what, we're here, we're, this is our last matter. No, it's our second to last matter tonight, but. Joe, are you okay with that? Would you like?
I am. I am.
Okay, I'm just opening everything up. So lucky for everybody, I happen to be involved in Zoom and the planning process committee. All right, so. And yes, all right, so we're looking at the that zoning. Give me one second and let me just get this draft open.
I, I guess when, while you're getting it open, let me just say that, remember, this is just a recommendation. And ultimately, town board, you know, will take it under advisement. They're going to decide. So if the recommendation is, we don't recommend, you know, we'll say why. If the recommendation is, we do recommend, we say why. If the recommendation is, we like this zone, we hope when it passes that this is a better idea. Again, it's just, it's just advisory.
Okay, can everyone see the spreadsheet?
Yep.
Okay. So.
Have part of the transitional, if you can.
Yep, so transitional is right here. And if there is an X, it is permitted. What particular section are you looking for?
I was just saying maybe that.
So I can specialty retail shops, barber shops, nail salons, beauty parlors, shoe repair, instructional tutoring services.
John, do you want to see those?
Looking at it.
Professional offices, banking offices, finance, insurance, real estate, legals, medical, dental, and governmental offices.
What do you want me to say? Okay, yeah, it, yeah, it's the same. It doesn't work for us. We're not going to find a barber shop or nail salon to go on that property. Or a beauty parlor. It's meant for a drive-through.
We talked about a cafe. We've talked about a bank. We've talked about some other things. And Tim was aware of that when he suggested that we discuss with the town board, the commercial A. So that, the idea of a commercial A was not something that we came up with. It was, it was an olive branch extended by the town board out to us. And we sort of accepted that. And that's why we were moving forward with good faith, suspending our litigation at the time, looking to go forward hopefully in that direction. And so this discussion about the traditional businesses was not really something we were prepared to discuss tonight. And it seems as though my clients have previewed it and it doesn't work for them in any event. And it's not to be rude or anything. Simply to say, we'd like the merits of our request for commercial A to move forward.
Right, right. I think the merits of the commercial A and it or, and/or the planning board is welcome to recommend anything else. I mean, if you want to recommend commercial B, you can do that. You can, it's whatever you think is appropriate.
I'll, I'll second the commercial B. Thank you, Jamie.
Anything. I mean, where, it doesn't, it's, it's a recommendation, right? So it's all on the table. There, they've presented a traffic study. They say that this is an appropriate use, that it's not going to harm anything. Ultimately, this board needs to look at whether the uses that are allowed in commercial B and not just, not just whatever the Penizatos might put in, but anything in the future is something that is within the comprehensive plan of this town and, you know, other studies that have been done.
And that's a very good summary that Jamie's given. I would simply add to that, that the reason we made the request, we did. And I'll, I won't talk about commercial B, but if you folks are familiar with the, with the parcel, and I know you are, if you stood in the middle of it and you looked in every direction, you'd see commercial B and commercial A. You'd see a large fire department. You'd see things that are purely and clearly of a very commercial nature. And the Penizatos simply want to continue on with that, not ask for anything that's over the top. It certainly has to be reviewed at the, at a site plan level at some point per the code. So at this stage, we simply want to market the property as commercial A per that request, which was again, something that certain members of the town board had suggested that we ask for. So we're not here, you know, grabbing for something we don't think that, that we should be grabbing for. This was sort of a suggestion by the town board.
So I, I accept all that and I, I'm just, I know that this is the first time this board has looked at this. So I want to make sure that it gets the appropriate review. And that any of your questions are, are asked and answered and that we would have an appropriate resolution. And that any of your questions are, are asked and answered and that we would have an appropriate resolution probably at the next meeting.
I'd like to ask. Jamie, I'd like to ask a question. The objection to the use of the property that the Penasados had planned earlier, has that been taken care of by changing it to commercial A?
I.
Well, can you repeat that question? I couldn't hear it all.
The, the Penasados were denied their original request a couple of years ago. So my question was, is the objection that the town planning board had taken care of by changing the zoning to commercial A?
So it's a different zone. It's, it, there are, there is some less intensity of use. And that's a question for you to entertain as part of this, you know, but it's, it's a whole independent discussion, really. They're, they're coming up with today. I mean, even if they came in, I'm going to say this, even if they came in with CB today and were looking for a referral, it would be the same analysis. The fact that they asked for it before and weren't granted, it doesn't preclude that there might be some reason why it would be appropriate. So it's really an independent look at this zone.
Arnie, just to give you a little background, there was a corridor study done at least 20 years ago. I can't remember the date of it. And the reason I believe that the town board denied their application, and I think it was denied twice, but I, I can't be sure, but it wasn't in keeping with the corridor study. A suggestion was made that, well, let's review the corridor study and see, maybe we can make some changes to that. And the town board did review that and decided not to make any changes to it. So that is primarily the reason that it was turned down before. The access is going to be an issue, but that's a slight site plan issue. But just to give it a little background, that's why I wanted to tell you that.
Thanks, Rich. That's helpful. Okay.
John, would you like to give your best pitch about the, about the CA zone? Some of the points as to why you think it's appropriate?
Oh, that's absolutely. And I sort of summarized it best when I said, if I, if I'm, if I'm a town board member, I'm a planning board member. If I, if I go to that lot and I stand in the middle of it and I look every direction, I am literally, literally surrounded by commercial A, commercial B, there's some R M behind us, which is of course, that's the Penasados owns a daycare, which is a business, and there's the large fire department building across the street. This is a commercial area. They're, the Penasados would love to have a, a, a gas station convenience store. Everybody knows that. That would be wonderful. Because why? Because it's right across the street. It's within a nine iron. You could reach that gas station from their property. And the true value is there. It is a purely, purely commercial area. The commercial A designation is not the preferred designation, but it's the compromised designation. Yes, we're in litigation. I don't want to discuss the litigation. However, when we, when we balance the fact that we've done a traffic study for even the heavier uses that Greg summarized, and we look at what's out there now, and we look at this area, I think, I think we would disagree that the 20-plus-year-old corridor study is really applicable to what it's become now. This property literally is an island amongst other commercial uses out there. And I, I drive, I'm, I'm, I'm the attorney for the town of Casanova. I live in Casanova. I drive by that parcel every single day and I look at it and I recognize that it's, it's a good candidate for commercial use, but it's up to the town board and the planning board to say what type of commercial use it would be. We want a commercial A. Members of the town board said, want to, or excuse, we want a commercial B. Members of the town board said, why don't you try commercial A? That's why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
John, I guess, just for clarification, and I'm not, this goes beyond probably what the planning board should be talking about. But you just said you don't want to talk about the litigation. You're compromising with the town board for the CA. You, you have not indicated whether or not the litigation would be dropped or dismissed if CA is granted. I'm kind of confused really how this got together and where we're at right now.
This, yeah, good, it's a good question. Number one, we, we can't do that. That would be, we, we can't work a deal like that because it would be contract, we'd be contracting with you to change the zoning. My opinion, that would be illegal. However, the, the idea here was emanated from members of the town board through Tim to reach out to, to ask for the commercial A. That's what we're doing. If the planning board doesn't want to recommend it, then so be it. I, I would suspect the town board won't go for it if the planning board doesn't recommend it. And it's, it's pending litigation. We simply, both sides simply run back to their battle lines, pick up the swords and continue on. But we don't, we don't want to get in. That's why I said I don't want to talk about litigation, because we were told that perhaps a middle ground would be to seek the commercial A zoning. And maybe I could flip the question around to the planning board, which is, what would be so bad about commercial A zoning with some of the things that Jamie had read? As long as it fits on the site, given, given what's out there in the corridor right now. That's sort of the, the flip side of the question.
Well, I, I appreciate you getting into the detail. That helps. My, part of my problem, to be honest, John, is that the only access to that lot will be at best a right-in, right-out on 92. But I understand the right-out is all that the DOT has approved so far. And then the other entrance on Enders Road has to go through the daycare parking lot to get to the site. And if there's a lot of traffic and you've got eight o'clock in the morning, a lot of kids getting dropped off at the daycare center, that could be quite a problem.
If I can address some, some of that. The right-in, right-out was basically approved by DOT. They looked at it and they said that that would be acceptable to them. The access to daycare center, I personally don't see it being problematic, especially if any of the uses are allowed on the, as far as commercial A. The very simple solution is to allow another, another driveway be adjacent to it. It would still be far enough away from 92 to provide access and avoid the stacking issues with 92. And that's something that could always be studied down the road and it's part of site plan approval. So it's not really, you know, I, I know everybody wants to solve every problem in the zone change, but it, that's more, definitely more of a site plan approval type of a, of a question or, or an issue to deal with. And it really depends on, on what kind of a use.
Wait, that shared, that shared access through the daycare was, we had agreed to that by the planning board back in 2016. They may as agree to that. That's what the planning board bonded.
Well, I, when this application first came before the planning board, I was on the planning board. Fred and Ann, if you want to jump in, feel free, because you guys, and Joe, I think you were on too. With that, moving the entrance from where it was at the daycare center back to where it is now was a huge improvement. Because where the light is, there's a lot of traffic coming.
Absolutely, especially with the buses. Yeah.
Yeah, and it makes a ton of sense where it is now. It's across the street from Marketplace or whatever that street is called. So that's why it was a big improvement. And I think that's what really sold me on the whole, you know, rezoning of the houses and so on and so forth to make, to push the daycare center back. That made perfect sense.
Right.
This is probably getting too far in the weeds, but Greg, when the DOT said yes to the right-in, right-out, are you going to have to put a right-hand turn lane onto 92 to go in? Was that part of the discussion?
No, no, that was never brought up. Typically, typically the right ends, especially when they're that close, like an intersection. And.
DOT didn't require.
You don't need a decel lane is what I think you're talking about, Rich. Yeah.
I'm probably getting way too far into the weeds on that. That's something for.
No, and you know, if, if the, whether the shared access is not, you know, the, the sureness concerns there with, with the daycare traffic maybe, and that's why, you know, personally, I'd rather see a separate access right adjacent to it. But again, it's, it's not, it's not that, that big of an issue, especially with the uses and the size of the site that you're, we're talking about. It's not a massive site. It's, it's not even, you know, it's barely over an acre and a half. You know, my guess is that, you know, the, you, you, you're going to track some, some morning use maybe there. So that would be something that would, you know, be maybe a conflict in the morning. But again, those are, those are really more site plan issues and zoning issues. And that driveway, even if it was right adjacent to where the existing driveway is, it's way, way better than what was existed before. Before it was very close to the intersection. It was a wide-open, uncontrolled access. I think that thing was 50, 60, 70 feet wide. It was, you know, totally did not meet any standards whatsoever.
No, I, I agree.
A huge improvement. I wouldn't want to move a driveway anywhere near close to where that was.
Without a doubt. The other thing I would like, like this board to look at between now and, and next week is if in fact it were CA or any other zone that you might think is appropriate, but primarily CA, is what would a site plan look like? Now, they, they're not putting forth a site plan. And certainly why, you know, why would they? There isn't anything planned right now. But can some of the concerns, it's not be addressed ultimately through site plan. What are the setbacks? What are the accesses? And they may have CA, but maybe it would be of such a size or such a nature that it's going to be not, not as intrusive as one might expect or what you might think or might be afraid of in the CA.
If I can add.
If you are afraid.
There is a site plan for this, you know, fictional 12 pump convenience store in the traffic study, which utilizes the right-in, right-out and the existing daycare. We did do at one point in time, a plan which showed a, like a morning-type fast food use on the site in a bank. And that's about the most you could get on the site. And that would utilize the same driveways. It all fit very well. There's still a lot of green space, plenty of room for drainage and, and all that. I think it, it still laid out a very good site plan. Those are about the, you know, the biggest thing you could probably put on there, and I don't even think it's big enough for that, is, is a drugstore. No, no one's doing drugstores anymore anyways. That, that, that ship left, you know, 10 years ago when they all started going across the street for each other. Now they're all, they've all consolidated. So it does not.
Greg, excuse me, would, would you mind sending that to Lisa? That, that plan you were just talking about, and she'll distribute it to the board as part of informational purposes for this application?
Sure. And we did, I'm sure it came up front of board, you know, years ago when we were looking at this. But I'd be happy to dig that one up again.
I, in the CA.
Variances or anything like that?
Doug, Doug. Oh, I'm sorry.
In the CA, I believe that gas stations are permitted or pumps. Is that correct?
No, they're not. No, and it was, this was a traffic site that we did previously. It was the most intense traffic generator, I think, and, and in general, I think it was everybody's real concern. And that's why we kind of submitted this one here.
Hey, Doug, I don't know if you remember this or if it still exists, but there was an easement placed on Lot 1, which is the parcel that they're talking about rezoning, benefiting Lot 2, which is the existing daycare center. Is that still in place, you know?
I'd have to look and see, but I do recall, I do recall that that was on there.
You're right on, yeah, right, right on.
That was, I think, access to the, to right-in, right-out.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's what it was, giving the daycare center access to that right-in, right-out, which might help us. If we had a survey that showed that, it might help us understand what could go there.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we've shared those plans with you before. Be happy to put that, that back in front of you, if that helps.
That would be helpful to me, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Although I'm not, I'm not sure that, that, we're trying to get a recommendation tonight, I think, John.
I, I'm not, I'm always, again, I'm one voter. I'm just, I'm not really comfortable. There's questions that I have. I want to look at some other documents, the survey before I vote, but I'm just one out of, hey, where'd Joe go?
That's the next one.
Is Joe gone?
Joe left the meeting.
Nang is off.
He went off too?
Yeah, no, I think they.
Yeah. Gone.
Gone.
Oh, and they don't tell me where he went.
Well, that's, that's my thought. I'm just, I, I personally am not ready to make a recommendation one way or the other.
No, I mean, we're not, we're not doing that, really.
I, in absence of Joe, I, I will, I guess I'll ask the board what other questions they have. And is every, number one is, that's number one. That's important. Number two is, are people agreeable to making a recommendation at the next, next meeting? That would be certainly more meaningful than tonight.
That, that would make me comfortable. Greg, one more, one other question I've got.
Wait, 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 wait. That was a question for everyone.
Oh, I don't want to forget this.
Yeah, Fred and Mike.
Next week, next meeting would be fine with me.
Wait, why is there a next meeting? To ask them that?
Because there's sketches they want to see. They have questions.
Okay.
That's okay with me.
Fair enough.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ann, thank you. Thank you. I heard you. It's okay with you.
My, my computer's going in and out.
Yeah.
I disappear and I come back.
Actually, depends on is it okay to.
Yeah, we're okay with that.
Yeah, we're, that's fair enough. You guys. Greg, do you have something from the DOT agreeing to a right-in, right-out? A letter or an email or something? And did that come from Betsy?
It, it was, it, it, the discussions were with Betsy. I'm 99% sure we have something, because I know it came up at the previous, you know, approval meetings. I've got to find it. It's a big box. So I will, I will look, I will look for that approval, but I.
That would be another thing, thing that would be very helpful in trying to determine which way to go.
We can look for that. It was definitely with Betsy, because I remember having discussions.
I, I, I believe I have it too.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So I, I will get the board, the site plan we did, which had a couple of uses. Smaller uses. And, and we'll look for that DOT letter and a survey which shows the.
We have to get news about them.
Okay.
I know those were discussed. I'm pretty sure they were party approvals.
If you can find it as soon as possible, that'd be great, so we could make a decision at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to, to circulate everything as soon as possible and, and give everyone the opportunity to look at it all in advance.
Guys, I have Joe on the phone right now. His computer died, so.
Have to plug, you have to plug it in. I found that out.
Um, if I could relay things to you via this way, then we can keep moving if that works for everybody.
Sure. So I think, right now, we're, we will, we don't need a motion or anything to just keep this moving.
They don't need.
Adjourn it to the next meeting. It's just an open matter. Is there any objection to that?
Joe thinks that we should be able to move it, just adjourn it to the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, we agree.
Penasados are okay with that.
Okay, everybody seems to be in agreeance with that.
Yes.
Dylan, John, thank you. Greg, thanks. John.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jamie.
Can you hear them?
Thank you, board members. We could hear you.
Thank you, and we'll get that stuff to you in the next day or two.
And for that, yeah, so that's just goodbye to them, not to the rest of us.
No, not yet. Okay, so I've got Joe on speaker. He can hear you guys. You just can't see him.
Thank you.
We had some other business.
Yeah, we got one more item.
Woodland Hills.
Hi, Ann.
So I did circulate the letter that went out. And I believe that Joe just wanted me, wanted us to look at it, make it public and, and put in the record that, and Doug, feel free to chime in on this as well, that we are scheduling the Woodland Hills to be on the agenda on July 27. It's going to be a busy night, people. Struggling. There, the documents were re. There, the documents were received. Remember, there were like pages and pages of comments that Doug put out, and they came back with pages and pages of, of revisions. So his crew is in the process of reviewing that. There were documents submitted on June 17. So that was after, of course, COVID, the couple months delay. We, we even talked to them in a small meeting. Doug was on that call and some other people to go through issues in April, to clarify some of the engineering issues. So on June, on July 1, they made some changes to the documents. I don't know how significant, but they, there were certainly changes, and Doug can speak to that. So now, as of July 1, we have basically everything they want us to consider is our, you know, understanding right now. So we let, we asked them to let us know if there's anything else past July 1, and it's under review by Doug and his team. Doug, you want to chime in?
Jamie, can I ask one quick question first? This, is the, the letter just one page? Because there's no signature on it.
Yeah, I did it in memo form, just so I could PDF it and send it off to them, and I sent it to them by email.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Are we going to deal with the same, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ann.
Yes, Ann.
Oh. My, my feedback's so bad here. But anyway, are we dealing with the same people that we have been?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, excuse me. There, there is once, we did get a letter stating that Vaughn Lang attorney is now a partner in the project, and he will, he will be working with Tom Blair as counsel as well.
Okay, not a new owner.
I don't know what his ownership interest is. I'm, I believe that the letter said he had an ownership interest.
Yeah.
The email.
Yeah, that was not the name I heard, but somebody called and left me a message, and I thought, what is this? Yeah, it was interesting.
Everything about this project is interesting.
Yes. So they said there was a new owner.
I think that that, I, I believe, I was told, we were told by an email that Vaughn Lang is a partner.
Yeah, but no, Vaughn, I know Vaughn. It's, that was not the name.
And, and I think it was a rumor going around that another Realtor had either offered to buy the project or had bought the project, something like that. But I, I don't think that's the case at all.
Okay. Yeah, they left a message and, and no name, and I thought, this is strange.
So Doug, do you want to talk about the, the nature of the review right now?
Sure, it's very voluminous. The SWIP is over 700 pages long. There are over 120 pages of comments that they have given back to us. There are several, if I look at the drawings, every drawing has been changed. There are at least four new drawings. The drawing count is now up to, I believe, 33 drawings, as opposed to the 24 that we've looked at before. There, there is information that we are reviewing for the dam. There is information we are reviewing for the SWIP. Like Jamie said, there was one submission that came in June 17. We indicated to the applicant that we did not receive the entire application. Some of it was electronic, some of it was hard copy. The electronic versions were missing significant items. So on July 1, there was a new submission that was hand-delivered to Lisa at the town offices. At that time, a jump drive with all of the submissions data, we understand, was also given to Lisa. She downloaded that. I believe that's what you all have now. So that was, I'm looking here, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but, so, you know, the, the week after the 4th of July last week, we initiated review of the documents, and that is moving forward as expeditiously as possible. We have all hands on deck. We have several individuals reviewing this, as you can imagine. You know, the last time we saw this was mid-December, so they've made significant changes, it would appear, over the last six months. And there's a lot to review. So, you know, as I spoke to Jamie, we will get the review done as quickly as possible. We will try to get it done this month, but there's no guarantee. So when they're on the agenda for July 27, there may or may not be a complete submission review done at that time, but we will endeavor to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Lisa, how are they, how are they with their engineering fees to the town? Are they up to speed, or do they owe us money?
Right now, I believe Doug has requested more money from them. I believe that was in the letter that Jamie sent.
$5,000 something, yeah.
Oh, was that in the letter?
Yes.
Oh, the $6,500.
Yep.
All right.
So they, they've added, they've added a response letter to Jamie. They've added a response package to me. They have added a report to Joe and a second report to Joe, and then a fifth piece of information that they've also included is a correspondence from J.K. Tobin. But like I said, we, we haven't gotten into that. So there's a lot of stuff there.
Well, they, they are going to be on the agenda, and we certainly have an obligation to move, move this forward. They have submitted what they consider a full package, you know, whether we do or not, or whatever questions there are. And, you know, I think we've talked ad nauseam that this, you know, this is in engineering right now, and we're really depending upon Doug and his, his group. And at the same time, I'm keeping track of all the other, the legal timelines.
Well, hopefully, they didn't run out of money yet, and they can pay the $6,500 before the next meeting.
I will let you know when I get it.
Okay.
If I get it.
You know, once they know that the agenda's out there, is this going to draw a crowd again for our next meeting?
Probably.
Probably.
I'm, I'm very nervous on how this is going to go, especially with them on the agenda, but I'm sure we'll get through it.
I mean, once the agenda gets out there.
My phone's going to ring off the hook.
We might have to meet at the fire station again.
Well, I.
They don't, they don't want us back.
I think we should, I think we should meet by this method. I think you'll have a lot better participation, to tell you the truth.
Maybe. Oh, Joe, are you back? Oh, I like that story. Right in time to adjourn the meeting.
So is that it on this topic?
I think so.
I think, yes, that's the update, and.
No.
And there you have it.
So I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Should I go a second?
Rich and Fred are going to adjourn, okay?
Can Joe hear that?
Joe says okay.
Unanimous.
Carried.
Guys, drive carefully.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe.